Good evening and welcome to the November 20th, 2017 meeting of the Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen. May we have a roll call, please?
President, this is Selectman Scasiato, Selectman Whiteside, Selectman Slaven, Selectman Titlebaum, Town Administrator Derek Sullivan, Town Council Rich Bowen.
Okay, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. McMillan.
Without the British accent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and justice for all.
God save the Queen. Okay, announcements. Do we have any? Selectman Scasiati, none, Selectman Whiteside?
I just want to remind everybody that there are several Christmas fairs on December 2nd throughout the town, and if you're like me, you can go to all seven or eight of them and get your Christmas shopping done. I recommend it.
That's it?
From the board, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Be safe and enjoy. Remember, we have the Christmas parade, which we still haven't been officially notified of yet, for December 2nd, I think at 3:00 PM. And again, up on the Facebook website, Wareham Matters and stuff, there's a constant list of different events going on. We have local churches and different events. Please try and participate in those particular events because it's really financially important for them to have that sponsorship as well. That's it.
Okay, yes, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And also, Saturday is, well, we all know what Black Friday is. Let's go to the mall and get trampled. Saturday, however, is Small Business Saturday, so it'd be nice if people go out to the smaller places in town, in the villages, out on Cranbury Highway, and patronize the locally-owned businesses, not just the big box stores for Christmas. Any citizens' comments this evening? Okay, no appointments, reappointments, or interviews, no licenses or permits. We're down to town business. I'm actually gonna jump the order here. No, actually, I'm gonna stick to the order here. We've got the beach and transfer station fee structure is listed first.
Motion to approve as submitted from last meeting.
Second.
Okay, do we want to announce what the fees are?
I think we did it last time. We're gonna read it off again?
We read them into the record.
Yep, I'll read them into the record again, just so people know. Currently, we have a combination sticker for both the beaches and the transfer station. It's $30 for a resident, it's $15 for a senior citizen resident, and it's $5 for a one-day pass. The new rates as moved would be $40 for the transfer station for the resident. That's actually down from 45. We lobbied a little bit behind the scenes to knock down our town administrator on that one. $10 for each additional vehicle. So that's a little bit of a break if you buy both. If you have two cars, you wanna put dump stickers on. The transfer senior rate is $20, also $10 for an additional vehicle, $5 for a one-day pass, $5 if you break your windshield and need a replacement. For beach parking, the resident will be 15, the resident's senior beach pass will be 5, the non-resident beach pass will be 50, a guest placard is 50, a $10 day pass is only good for Swiss beach, Swiss neck, that's $10, and $5 if you break your windshield. So, we have a motion by Clark Slaven, seconded by Selectman Whiteside. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, unanimous, 4-0-0. I would note that I don't believe that these stickers have gone up in price for at least 15 years, so while the price jump this year may be a little bit steep, just consider yourselves lucky that nobody saw fit to raise them in the past 15 years or so. Next up, we have the-
Just as a reminder, it's also due to the increase in costs that we're getting for the transfer station.
Yeah, it was about an $80,000 increase for the transfer station this year alone. One of the issues we do face going forward is that the agreement, the tri-town agreement with the transfer station expires in 2020, I believe.
2020.
And so, if that is not something that is, can be redone, renegotiated, which we don't believe it will be, we're gonna have to find a different trash solution for people in town. So, you may only be able to buy the stickers for that for another couple of years.
Roadside.
No, we have to get friendly with Ward.
Thanks.
You mean roadside drop-off, which we already have along every street in town?
It was a joke, dear.
Okay. Next up, discussion with Representatives of the School Building Committee.
Could we do C and D?
Actually, do we have anybody here for the bond? No? We can just vote on that afterwards.
We have no paperwork for that.
Can I just do it now?
Do you have any paperwork for that?
We don't have any paperwork. It's in there. There is no paperwork.
I wouldn't have it.
I think it's, I think it's in our email.
It is in the email?
Yeah, hold on, please.
But there's nobody here for that, so we can get the school people up and deal with that afterwards.
Yeah, I'll find an email while you're doing that.
Yep. So, we have Representatives of the School Building Committee, and your consultants, come on up.
Thank you very much.
Tell us what you've been up to. Okay, Selectman Whiteside's had a long day, so she's excused.
She just says more-
She already knows all this stuff, anyway.
Yeah.
We could've saved you all a lot of time and just asked her, but we wanted the unvarnished version.
See the whites of her eyes.
She's deserving us, actually.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
So, I'll introduce yourselves and-
Kim Shaverhood, Superintendent.
Good evening. I'm Mike McMillan, the School Business Manager.
I'm Chad Gritten, Owner's Project Manager of PMA Consultants.
I'm Dennis Daley, Architect, Mount Vernon Group Architects.
We can't interrupt you on the school committee.
Okay. The reason we asked to meet with you folks was to find out where you are in the process of preparing your MSBA submittal, what sites you're looking at, what you're thinking about for a building, and so on and so forth. So, whoever amongst you would like to deliver a summary?
Yeah, so maybe, I mean, maybe we can, there's a few of us can speak. I can get started, and then Chad and the designer here can speak a little more on what's happening in detail. So, we have been accepted by the MSBA into the project for the development of the, really developing the design and options around the new school to replace Minot Forest and possibly Deacon's. We've gone through the process of first selecting the old PM, the Owner's Project Manager, and as PMA, and then we also went through the process with MSBA of selecting the design firm, and that's Mount Vernon Group. So, now we have these two, these are two crucial parts of the design team, and now that these guys are in place, we really start to make progress with this project. There's a number of pieces underway already. Part of it is developing the education plan. So, under the way the MSBA designed this process, they really want the design of the building to be driven by the education needs for the district. And so, that we designed, we developed the education plan. At the same time, we're working on looking at what sites we might use, and then these things come together along with a couple of other pieces. Then we'll go into some detail, but I can hand over to Chad if you wanna give us an idea of the timeline.
Thank you.
And options.
So, the MSBA process that's been authorized thus far really consists of two primary steps. We have the feasibility study and the schematic design. The feasibility study is a step that we're in right now, and that is really two major components, so two major submissions to the state. The first submission is the preliminary design program. That's really when we develop the education program. We develop a space summary that's gonna guide the size, shape, and eventually the cost of the building moving forward. And then the third component of that is a list of all available sites within the community that may support a project. And we go through each of those sites, we do an analysis. We're looking at items like topography, we're looking at availability for town water, town sewer, FEMA flood maps, you name it, it's a full comprehensive study. As of right now, the Minot site obviously is a consideration, the Deacon's site's a consideration. The Town Hall site has been identified as something we want to study. There are two sites down on Charge Pond Road, one next to Little League Fields, and one that currently houses the maintenance garage, and several other sites within the community. So, we're gonna take a look to the recent plan performed by the Open Space Committee. They have a very, very thorough analysis of many of the prime sites that may also be opportunistic for school development in the future. So, the preliminary design program is scheduled to be submitted to the state in early January. Once that's submitted, so this is all the options, we have two enrollments that were authorized to study. One is just grades three and four, and then the other one is kindergarten one and two. So, the smaller enrollment would be just the Minot School, and the larger enrollment is if we were to consolidate Minot and Deacon's. To be clear, the MSBA has not authorized a project of Deacon's by itself right now, so Minot was the one invited into the program. And the MSBA actually suggested that both schools are studied at the same time, understanding that Deacon's is going to have needs in the not-so-distant future.
Okay.
So, after that preliminary design submission goes in in early January, the MSBA School Building Authority will provide feedback on that submission, and then we'll charge forward to what we call PSR, it's Preferred Schematic Report. And so, now we're taking that list of, it may be 15, 20, 25 different options, and we're gonna identify which option makes the most sense for the Town of Wareham. Looking at everything from enrollment, various challenges that we need to overcome, costs, we're gonna look at the bottom line to the district specifically. Wareham's projected reimbursement rate from the state right now, 72% to 75%, depending on the various incentives that are available. Some of that's affected by the level of green certification, whether or not we renovate an existing building. So, all of that is gonna be studied in detail over the next three to four months, and then ultimately, a selection for the top site choice and building option is gonna be submitted to the state in April of next year. Again, we go to the MSBA's board. With the board's approval, we hope to be invited to commence schematic design on the project. Schematic design takes several months. Right now, we're forecasting that to be complete right around fall next year, October, November, and hopefully back to the MSBA for their December 12, 2018 board meeting for final approval. And that's when we lock in the scope and we lock in the budget. And that budget that's locked in includes what we can expect the MSBA to contribute, what their maximum contribution is. That's a lot of information if you have any questions.
No, I think I'll be watching the rebroadcast of this. Questions on the board?
So, we would not be looking to do a debt exclusion until the following year?
So, the-
It'll be April 2019, town meeting?
So, April, I would say, worst case, we would actually like to take a bit more aggressive approach and target November of next year, if that's possible and if that's supported by the community.
Our meeting's in October.
Yes, yep, yep. So, the town meeting would be in October, and then the ballot, I think, is November 6-ish for debt exclusion. And the reasoning, the rationale behind that is to take advantage of higher turnout at the polls. It's state elections next year, so.
Yeah, there's a state year. Everybody knows that I've been very much aggressive about replacing the two schools at the same time and trying to get them as close together into a campus style to save on our overall costs, such as, you know, cafeterias, gymnasiums, administration offices, et cetera. We know that the information has been that because of the number of students, we can't put them into one building. At least, that's what I was told a while ago. So, it has to be two separate buildings.
So, it can be one building. It would be a large building, so the approved enrollment of grades K through 4 is 1,020 students, and then the existing pre-K enrollment, assuming that's rolled into that same building, most likely it would be, is just over 80 students. So, we're talking about an enrollment of 1,100 students, which translates to 150,000 square-foot building. So, it is-
It's about the size of the high school, because the high school was 900 with a max of 1,100.
Yep.
So, we can do one building, because the information that I had been given before, you know, and it was very emphatic that we had to have two buildings.
Nope, the MSBA actually has been pushing communities towards consolidating for efficiencies.
Okay, that makes a major change, because that was the biggest point we had going, was the idea of having to have two buildings, even with a connector. Just, you know, having two separate schools in two locations, it doesn't work.
Right. And one of the design opportunities that would definitely be explored is the opportunities for a school within a school. So, maybe you have two substantially separate sort of wings for the different grade levels, and then a common core space that can be shared.
You can design any way you want.
Yeah, they might feel like different schools, but they're sharing a lot of the same spaces.
Depends how much room you have to spread the school out wing-wise to make that work.
Right.
That's strictly a land issue at that point. That makes a big change for me.
Thoughts on the Superintendent?
Certainly looking for community input as we go along. We think that that will be very valuable. We'll be tapping expertise of the police and fire as we go along the way, just to have their input as well. We'll be publishing our meetings, and certainly they're open. If people have comments and questions, we would ask them to please let us know, because we would like to address them.
Okay.
I have a question for Derek. Derek, on this, when we do a debt exclusion, do we have to go for the full amount, then it gets adjusted back as the money comes back from MSBA at town meeting?
I think you actually have to get the-
Gross.
But your final, what you finally bond out is the-
Yeah.
Are they gonna pay us back, then?
Yes. So, I think in the past, and you can correct me, Chad, I might get us wrong, but you have to get approval for the full amount-
Yeah.
-with the reimbursement rate. So, the MSBA will give us the language of the article they want to see voted, and they're pretty, I mean, definitely with the other projects we've done with them, they're very specific about, you have to get every single word right, and they want, and it'll say the full amount of the project, the reimbursement rate, and then that's what will have to be voted on.
It's gonna be extremely critical to get this information out, explain really well, and to get the stakeholders of the town engaged, because I believe, if I remember right, in order to get the middle school done, it took three times to get a debt exclusion passed. So, from a time standpoint, if you have to go three separate debt exclusions, that could put you out five years.
And not just that, but the cost, the construction costs-
Keeps going up every year.
Yep. So, the longer it takes, the more expensive it will be. So, I don't know if you wanna, Judith, do you wanna say?
I just wanna say, we have a plan for disseminating information. It's part of our plan to keep the community appraised at everything we're doing along the way. You can speak to that, too, how we're gonna do it.
Well, part of, part of our whole tact is to have visioning sessions, so we really understand what the school is going to be, how the space is gonna be used. And the vision is not just for the educators, but it's really for the whole community, and we're gonna make those sessions open. But we're also gonna have workshops dealing with all of the various agencies within the town, police, fire, all first responders when it comes to safety and security within the school, DPW. We get down to the finest details of even how the parking lots might be plowed and the types of materials that should be used in the landscape. And we thoroughly inform all stakeholders about the entire process, and we try to have as many workshops and presentations as possible to bring the story to the community. We stress the importance, for instance, of making at least one presentation to the Council on Aging, because people with fixed incomes are gonna be very concerned about the cost of school, and we want them to be fully informed so they can make the best possible decision. So, it's gonna be a full-fledged program of information.
I'm not worried about the, you know, the town departments and the town stakeholders as far as town departments go. What I'm concerned about is the people who actually make the decision, which are the voters. And we have a product mix in the town with about almost 8,000 retirees. It's difficult to get people to understand they have a moral and ethical obligation to provide the best education possible for the children, because someone else paid for their education, their parents didn't either. But when you have that larger number of retirees in the town, especially with our income mix, it gets, it's very difficult to have people step up to pay. So, it's the stakeholders that I'm concerned about, are the people who actually go to the ballot and vote. That's where the emphasis has to be. I'm not worried about town departments sitting there and telling you, we want this layoff of fire, this for police. That's a, that's a given. You have to do that when you build anything. I'm concerned about the-
We've stressed all the costs, that cost is a consideration all along the line when we're hiring the PR firm, when we're hiring the architects, when we go to meetings in the MSBA. We explain what kind of town Wareham is, and we want the school, but that we, that definitely you have to be keeping the cost down, the cost is a leverage. It won't pass if it has a higher, you know, a higher price tag to it, so we know that that's, that's one of the driving factors is the cost of our project, for our community, for all.
Okay. Just shifting gears, has the school committee expressed any preference for sites or type of school, or any of that at this point?
No, we just want, we want, we want, we want a process where everyone, everyone is involved in it, and any number of sites would probably, you know, would work. So, we have no preference, we have no preconceived notion going into it. We wanna do what's best for the students, best for the town, what helps to keep the cost down, you know, that type of thing.
Okay.
Very important. And, and educationally sound building, it's built for the way the students need to be taught makes a difference.
It has to be engineered for long sustainability.
Absolutely. And different uses, you know, if, if, if the, the needs change, that the, the building is adaptable.
We'll have some community rooms, my understanding, a few in the-
Yeah, so we're really hoping, I mean, so one of the key things, and I think you've heard it echoed here, is designing a school which will meet the needs of the community, primarily for education, obviously, but also for other community needs outside of school time, and that's gonna be a key part of the development of the design. We want to see the building used as much as possible.
I know, I had asked you originally about having a community center as part of the school, but I think you came back and said that MSBA says, sure, fine, but don't put any expense in for that, because they don't pay for it.
So, yeah, exactly. So, essentially, if you want to add on, so, we have slides that shows the MSB have a very complicated formula that determines how much money you get, and is based on the square footage of classrooms, the number of classrooms, I mean, obviously the number of students driving that, and that also then drives the amount of common areas you can have. So, if you wanted to add, you know, a room that was gonna be used exclusively for non-educational purposes, the MSBA would not be willing to reimburse that, but that's not to say it couldn't be part of the overall project, you just wouldn't get the reimbursement for it.
There are definite parameters within which we have to work.
I know, we understand. Newton North killed everybody.
Yeah.
Except Newton.
Except Newton. They could afford it, too.
Yeah.
What we do is, design buildings where the, what we consider the community spaces, those are the larger core spaces, such as cafeteria, gymnasium, library, other spaces are accessible to the public, weekends, evenings, and everything, but we can secure the educational wings of the building and have a real community.
You mentioned library. Are you planning to build a library in the school?
Absolutely.
So, we're gonna put a library back in the school that functions?
Yes, they're called media centers now. It's much more than a-
I understand. Libraries today are different than what we built before. Everything's changing. So, we'll be allowed to actually put a library back into the system?
Absolutely.
It's a major change for what's going on.
I mean, I do think this is a really exciting, exciting project, and one that we really hope will be an asset for the community and for the school district. And I, you know, if anybody is, wants to get involved or wants to be, you know, included in the project, has views on the project, we have details on our website, and they can get in touch with me and the Superintendent and other people in the School Building Committee and get involved.
I think it would have a positive impact, obviously, on economic development and property values when we, when we have a better educational facility, when people came in respecting people to buy into the town. It would be a plus, because the other, the middle school and the high school are such, you know, good-looking buildings, that it would be the piece that's missing there.
We've been waiting a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. Both Minot and Deacon's are rundown, they're old buildings.
They're old buildings, yeah.
We just don't wanna make the same mistake that the town made with the police station back in 1971. It seems like a whole different era, but the, at that time, they took what the town would give rather than what they really needed, so they built a facility that was virtually obsolete and couldn't be expanded, et cetera. So, it was like a wasted energy in the long run.
Well, I think, you know, the MSBA-
Yeah, I was just gonna say that.
Those things don't happen.
They have, I think, three or four designs they go by now, and that's, that's the ballgame.
We were just talking about some, and we're going to visit a couple of them.
So, the MSBA do make us jump through a lot of hoops, but, and, you know, that, there is a benefit to that, in that they bring a lot of expertise to be able to ensure that the kind of thing you mentioned doesn't happen with our design.
Well, they simplify the process.
Yeah.
That's what they do.
From a non-MSBA perspective, or from the town's perspective, I really think the Town Hall location makes a lot of sense for a lot of reasons. You've got everything centralized, your grounds crews don't have to drive all over town to get from school to school to school, the buses come in one location. They could be, they could even be, I mean, right now, where they're parking overnight, the missile maintenance garage. I don't know what would, would happen with a new facility here, but, you know, you might have to put a traffic light on Route 6 to accommodate that kind of traffic. But other than, other than that, I think this is a pretty good, this would be a good location if, if we have the room, and that, of course, is the question. Do we have the room for it? But I think it would be great to centralize your operations, so that, you know, you could literally go walk to each one of the, well, be a little bit of a walk to the high school, especially in the winter, but, you know, you could literally walk out of your office and go to any of the schools in your charge. I think that would be, make your life a lot easier than having to go on a roadshow to go, go check things out. You know, some of the staff in the schools might prefer the roadshow still, but nonetheless.
That's your segue.
That's right. Well, you know, we certainly appreciate the opportunity to come, and what we would like to do is to visit you on a regular basis, just to share the information and keep everyone updated.
Just going, just going back, you've got the preliminary design piece that's due in January?
Yep, January 9th is the submission date.
January 9th. Is that something that we could be copied on, the Selectmen, once you've got some sort of a document or a draft or something of that nature?
Absolutely.
Available?
Yep.
Yeah.
That, that would help. You know, we don't need to see every document that you guys see, but, because I'm sure there are a lot of them, but whenever you've got, you know, a fairly critical piece in a, in a critical stage, it would be helpful if we could see that.
One thing you'll see in this PDP is actually every critical document will be part of it. They're generally about this thick.
Oh, so it's a lot of reads. Be careful what I wish for?
Yeah.
It's a big package. Yeah, any, any document that basically is, you know, at a timeframe where it's an actual piece itself, it's a submission, will make it easier for us as we go along, because we have to sell this as much as anybody else.
Yeah. Okay. So, any thoughts?
No. I, I missed tonight, because I figured I'd be getting a good dose right now, so.
Well, any other questions on the board? Any other remarks you folks would like to make?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for hanging around after what I'm sure was a long meeting before this one. We appreciate it, and we look forward to hearing more from you folks as we go forward.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, so now we have the performance bond.
I don't have backup for it. I don't have the dollar amount, and-
That was in the email, I thought.
I thought it was, but I don't have it.
You don't have the email?
I don't have the email.
It's either Janet or Ken.
I've got the email that came from Janet, which is just Attorney Bill and Gary's backup information, you know, the rates.
No, she sent something out last week. She sent something out on Thursday.
I have the agenda, but it had nothing-
You can dig it up, Derek.
See if you got it there. It's not my backup.
If not, I'll see if I can find it, 'cause I did see it.
Because it's normally in the town email it stays.
No, I mean, you won't be happy, because it's a charity, but-
No, because I don't have any paperwork that tells me who decided what the dollar amount was and what it covers, et cetera, because normally you get- You got it for Thursday? Okay, you wanna read it off?
Oh, well, we just pass it to you? It's a little bit to read. I'll dig it up, too.
Yes, the only question I would have is, the dollar amount, is it based on what the actual cost is, plus, you know, another 50% more, you know, what the status is? There's really nothing there to tell me anything. Of course, everybody knows my preferences for cash. Little bum. Okay, I did read this before. I must have voided it out somehow. The terms of the bond that I read it before, okay. It's not a long-term bond either, because they're basically, once they get the other three or four lots done, they'll, they'll be the end of it.
Yeah, they're not far. In fact, you'll probably see lights paving over there as we speak, putting the top coat on.
There's paving today.
November 13th, 2019 is the- Yes, November 13th, 2019 is the due date for putting the improvements on.
Yes.
The bond was $411,608 and zero cents.
Correct.
So you're okay with it, aside from the fact that it's not cash?
Yes, because the insurance company, et cetera, is-- I went and very quickly double-checked that from before, that's okay.
Okay. Make a motion?
Motion to approve the bond.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the bond--
This for Wareham Marketplace.
Right, JDC Wareham LLC, bond by Aspen American Insurance Company. Motion to approve by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Scaziotti, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 300. It's all set. You get your computer back.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see, any other town business not reasonably anticipated? Selectman Scaziotti? Clerk Slavin?
Nope.
I don't have any either. Town administrators report, anything to tell us?
No, just wishing you and yours a happy Thanksgiving to everybody out there.
Happy Family Day.
Happy Family Day, yeah.
Got the in-laws.
Liaison initiative reports, Selectman Scaziotti, Clerk Slavin?
I'll do as quickly as I can. Today, it really wasn't a budget, per se, but it was a department explanation from the school department of each one of the schools. They went through what they had, how things worked, and what they were gonna need for the coming year. There's gonna be some, quite a bit of back and forth on the budget. I believe the school budget is coming December 6th, I think is there.
That's the budget hearing.
Yeah, I will, that's why I went today, especially because I won't be there on the 6th, I have a conflicting syrupet commissioners meeting. But it'll, there's a few things we'll need to look at, and I think even the school committee saw some numbers they weren't very happy with. So it will be the usual. But it was done, actually, we were done at 12:15, which is about half the normal time, which I was surprised. Everybody did a very good job, and they, very concise, and the information was clear. And I don't think there's anything else of importance that we have. Nope, that's it.
Okay. You know, at this level, where it's internal to the, to the school department, it's essentially a wish list.
Why not?
So, as I say, sometimes I think we're, I don't want to use the words more politically savvy, but sometimes it's best to keep your desires to yourself. At least when it comes to money.
It's mediation and negotiation.
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, this is an opportunity for the principals to come in and say what they're looking for, for the, their internal department heads, if you will, to say what they need and everything else, but it's like our capital plan, yeah, we need 90 million worth of infrastructure, guess what, you got 2 million to play with this time around, and that's what you do.
It's a simple philosophy, if you don't ask, you don't get.
Yep.
So you better ask, at least, it's on the record.